City Council Meeting to Order, May 28th, 2019. Um, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Here.
Alderman Garza?
Here.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Here.
Alderman Denell? Alderman Franco?
Here.
Alderman Seville?
Here.
Alderman Hartburns?
Here.
Alderman Smith? Alderman Bug?
Here.
Alderman LaFche?
Here.
Alderman Jenkins? Alderman O'Connor? Eleven present.
Please rise, we have a moment of silence in honor of our active servicemen and servicewomen, as well as our veterans. Please remain standing as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be followed by the invocation which will be provided by Reverend Gary McCann of the New England Congregational Church. Moment of silence. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We pause amid a busy day, God, to give thanks for all that is good. We have been blessed with friends and family, with a spring that has clothed in all the colors of the rainbow as flowers bloom, though we could do with a little less rain. With birds that sing our hearts into joy, and with a diversity in this community that celebrates our differences as much as our commonalities. We give thanks for art and for artists who allow us to see the world in new ways, today giving special thanks for Wendell Minor, whose gifted hands and creative mind have given many images that whet our appetite for reading. He has piqued our imagination of what it would be like if we were a penguin and excited our sense of wonder in reaching for the moon. We give thanks too for Florence Minor, whose books charm and delight the children whose imaginations are stirred to life with words and pictures alike. Today we honor the hometown boy who's made good with his education and upbringing in this community and who honors his Midwest roots with brush and paint, offering sight and insight on every page. We give thanks for city leaders who help keep Aurora strong and vibrant, celebrating the rich cultural and religious heritage of this community that we call home. Guide them in their decisions for the welfare of all and keep us all in a spirit of love. Amen.
Thank you Pastor McCann. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, Special City Council Meeting? Motion by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Franco, all in favor? Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, May 14th, 2019, City Council Meeting? Motion by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Franco, all in favor? Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve and appoint a Sergeant of Arms for the meeting? Motion by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Franco, all those in favor? Motion carries by voice vote. Mr. Mohammed, will you start with the presentation?
Thank you. Good evening Mayor, good evening City Council. We are honored tonight to have a number of presentations honoring Aurora in total. Monday, June 3rd, important day around here because that is when your first installment of your Kane County property taxes are due. We are excited because there's been a wonderful community collaboration development that's happened over the course of the last few months with Kane County Treasurer's Office. So we are honored today to have our Kane County Treasurer, Dave Ritter here. Mayor, can please join us down front with a special presentation that he has an announcement to make. We'd like to honor the Treasurer for his collaboration, his starboard community partner, with a mayoral commendation. We can meet the Mayor down in front of him. We can give the Kane County Treasurer, Dave Ritter, a round of applause, please.
You know, years ago we talked about having a number of services downtown Aurora, in the city of Aurora, services that normally we'd have to drive all the way to Geneva to get. Now, we're the second largest city in the state, you know, over 180 years old, over 200,000 people, so we, you know, had that, had that feeling that we should be the focal point of many of the services given in Kane County. And it was just something we talked about for a number, number of years. First, having the Kane County Clerk's Office in our, in our downtown and all the services that came along with it. And then we got an additional service, the ability to pay our taxes and not have to go far. Now, if I'm gonna have to pay my taxes a couple times a year, I don't want to have to drive all the way. It's bad enough I gotta pay 'em, let alone drive all the way to Geneva to do so. But now, with the partnership with our Treasurer's Office, um, we have the ability to do that right here at home. So it's gonna be right downtown at the Kane County Clerk's Office, you know, just a walk, stone's throw away from City Hall, where, uh, come Monday, come Monday morning, you don't have to take that drive down to Geneva. You just come right downtown, you're able to, to do your, uh, your, your business and get the services there. So I wanna thank you for, uh, providing that service to the citizens of Aurora. And I, I think it's well past time, but I appreciate you bringing that now. So let's give him one more round of applause.
Well, I'd like to thank Mayor Irvin and the city of Aurora and the City Council for all this effort and the help they've given us and, uh, being very supportive of bringing services to the city of Aurora. I know this is something I've been wanting to do for a long time and I know the Mayor has expressed a lot of, uh, effort to do this also. So this is gonna make things a little bit easier for our citizens, providing services, making them convenient to use. Unfortunately, it's property tax, but at least we can make it convenient and speedy. So, thank you very much, I appreciate the honors Mayor.
Applause for our Kane County Treasurer, Dave Ritter. We are honored tonight, thank you. We're honored tonight to have with us, we call Hometown Hero. When you speak about the great things in Aurora and the people who've helped make this city what it is the last 180 years, there are a number of names that come to mind. Think about those individuals who've taken the spirit of Aurora not only throughout the nation, but throughout the world. Those names become fewer and fewer, but still many. And one of those names, amazing illustrator, amazing artist, proclaimed as one of the most renowned illustrators of his time, born and raised right here in Aurora. We're so happy that he's back here with us, class of 62 graduate of West Aurora High School, coming back tonight for honors, yes, but to continue the legacy of art and illustration that he's helped to bring throughout the world. Please join me in welcoming the one and only, Mr. Wendell Minor.
Chuck, do you wanna join me? Chuck Nelson, would you?
Deputy Mayor, please join.
As the Deputy Mayor makes his way down, we honor Mr. Wendell tonight and tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. on the same street where he was raised, on New York Street, New York and Commonwealth, we will be naming that street in his honor.
So it is my pleasure to read, uh, the proclamation of, of Wendell Minor Day, May 28th, 2019. Whereas Wendell Minor was born and raised in Aurora, attended Greenman Elementary School and graduated from West Aurora High School in the class of 1962. And I'll add, if you don't mind, actually, we've lived on the east side before you started school, at Greenman School, so it has a little flavor from both, both sides of town. Just wanted to add that in there. It's not here in the proclamation, I just wanted to make it, make it known to everybody. Whereas, uh, Minor's career as an illustrator spans 50 years and he has created cover illustrations for more than 2,200 books, including the covers of some of the most significant works of our time. Dave McCullough's Truman, John Adams' "In 1776", Pat Conroy's "The Prince of Tides", Toni Morrison's Sula, The Harper's Lee, Harper's Lees' "To Kill a Mockingbird", whereas the portrait of Harry Truman that Minor painted for the cover of two-time Pulitzer Prize-winning Dave McCullough's book, Truman, is the permanent collection of the National Portrait Gallery in Washington DC. And Minor's other works are in permanent collections of such institutions as the Norman Rockwell Museum, the Museum of American Illustration, NASA, and the Library of Congress. Whereas Minor is also a noted New York Times bestselling author and Newberry Award winner with more than a dozen books to his own credit. And whereas Minor has been heralded as one of the best illustrators and artists in the world and has won more than 200 awards for his works, including being named Artist Laureate by Norman Rockwell, the Norman Rockwell Museum in Massachusetts, and an inductee into the West Aurora Distinguished Alumni Hall of Honor. Now therefore, I, Richard Seaver, Mayor of Aurora, do hereby proclaim today, May 28th, 2019, as Wendell Minor Day in the city of Aurora to be recognized on May 28th, each day from this point on.
International renowned artist, Mr. Wendell Minor. But for a man of his magnitude, a proclamation is not enough. Mayor, if you could continue.
It is my pleasure to award Mr. Wendell Minor with the key to the city of Aurora. The door is always open for you, brother. If it's not, you got a key to get in.
How do you follow this? This is terrific. I, I am so honored to be honored by my hometown. As an artist, I've always believed that the time and place where you were born has always colored how you see your life for the rest of your life. And my art has been so reflected in the heartland. As a lot of my east coast friends say that Wendell never got one foot out of the cornfields. And I'm very, very, very proud of that. And having a street named after you is even beyond my wildest dreams. As a matter of fact, Florence and I were joking this morning that it took Norman Rockwell only two years they were gonna have a street named after him. So, I'm just glad to be here to see it. So, what a terrific honor, I'm overwhelmed and thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Minor, if you could stay. Mrs. Florence Minor is here as well, she is also an author. Let's give her a round of applause. Please come on down, let's take a picture. If you can bring the award and the key down, let's take a picture of all three. Thank you to our public artist, Jen Evans. Thank you to Nancy Hop, Chuck Nelson, and all those who made this visit possible. Again ladies and gentlemen, 2,200 books illustrated, over 200 awards. One more round of applause for Mr. Wendell Minor. Couple more, Mayor. It's been a while since we've been in the council chamber. May is also Historic Preservation Month. As we work on the technology piece there, can I ask Mr. Joe Morgan to join us here? May is Historic Preservation Month and Historic Preservation Commission is active and alive here in the city of Aurora, designates landmarks, historical districts, and urban conservation districts within the corporate limits of Aurora and work really hard to adopt rules and regulations and keep a register of all property and improvements which have been designated for preservation. Historic Preservation members were present, if you can please stand, Mr. Dan Miller, Amber Foster, Al Singarelle, Kristen Ludwig, Seth Hoffman, Justin Arnold, Mike Walker, Fernando Castadon, Simon Munoz, and our staff liaison, Jill Morgan. If we can give the Historic Preservation Commission, um, uh... Each year the Commission works with the Mayor's Office for the Mayor's Awards of Historic Preservation. These awards recognize property owners who've made significant structural improvements while maintaining the historic character of their building. Eligible projects have, should have been completed between January 1st, 2018 and December 31st, 2018. Property should be at least 50 years old or designated as historic by the city of Aurora. Tonight, we have eight honorees who will receive the Mayor's Award for Historic Preservation. If we can give all eight a round of applause. There is a program booklet up front that has photos, where we will continue to go as we work on the technology. Our first recipient is 83 South LaSalle Model 51 LLC and Potter Construction. If we have, uh, our representatives, they can please join us down front. Thank you. Model 51 LLC and Potter Construction and Associates. This late Victorian brick commercial building was built in 1892. Rehab work on this vacant fire damaged building included extensive tuck pointing, rebuilding the rear wall, new windows, and complete interior restoration for an English tea room and apartments. Let's give a big round of applause for Model 51. Amazing work happening at 83 South LaSalle. Again, photos are in the program booklet. Another round of applause for 83 South LaSalle, thank you. Our next recipient, 55 South Lake Street, Dan Sletsch. The entire front facade of the building was destroyed and Dan beautifully rebuilt the facade using the standards of the Fox Walk Guidelines. Dan worked with the city staff on identifying the appropriate color and design of the brick to match the surrounding historic buildings. Another round of applause for Mr. Dan Sletsch. And we wanna give you an opportunity, if you don't have program booklets, please raise your hand, we have some for you. If you guys can help while we work on getting it up on the screen. If you need a program booklet so you can see what we're talking about, absolutely beautiful. Here we go. Thank you again, 83 South LaSalle, 55 South Lake Street, Mr. Sletsch. Our next recipient, as you can see possibly on the screen, keeps right on going, 206 and 208 North View Street, Mr. James Gero. James is here? James isn't here, let's give James a round of applause. Our next recipient, 612 South Fore Street, Israel Duran and Fred Construction. Israel and Fred? Another round of applause. Our next recipient is 110 North Chestnut Street, Ulysses Anita Bahena. There they go, round of applause for Ulysses Anita Bahena. The old aluminum siding was removed to expose the original wood siding underneath. The wood siding was restored along with replacing boards that were too deteriorated with the boards to match. The owners restored the porch, which involved installing all new wood siding to match the house and rebuilding the columns. Another round of applause for Ulysses Anita Bahena, 110 North Chestnut Street. Our next recipient of the 2019 Mayor's Award for Historic Preservation, 69 South View Street, Amy Volbrecht Reeves and Kyle Reeves. Scott? The home has undergone several rejuvenations and has continued to be beautifully maintained over the years. In 2017, a new furnace and air conditioning unit was installed and the home was recently painted blue with pink highlighting the softens and window trim and gold being used as an accent color on the ornate porch. Another round of applause for Kyle Reeves and Amy Volbrecht Reeves. Our next recipient, 354 Spruce Street, Jeff and Anna Pruder. On down? The brown synthetic siding that covered the home was removed. The restoration of the wood siding underneath included replacing boards that were too deteriorated and restoring the wood trim and molding. The entire house was painted historically appropriate green with cream accenting the color boards, corner boards, porch, windows, and molding. Another round of applause for Jeff and Anna Pruder. Our final recipient for this year's 2019 Mayor's Award for Historic Preservation, 523 West Dollar Place, Carlo and Holly Lusterdo. There they go. The owners have beautifully maintained the house since they purchased the property in 2005. In 2011, the homeowners went to great efforts to install historically accurate garage doors and re-roofed the garage, creating a wonderful addition to their property. In 2018, the entire house was re-roofed to match the garage. Another round of applause for Carlo and Holly Lusterdo. As you work to beautify Aurora and to keep our city at the top level, we thank you. I'm gonna ask all the recipients and members of the Commission to please join the Mayor for a group photo. Another round of applause for all of our recipients. Come right on down front? Commissions, if you can come line to the back? We're gonna angle you this way. Another round of applause for all of our honorees, 2019 Mayor's Award for Historic Preservation. They have a wonderful reception plan down at our history center when we conclude this meeting. Mayor, any comments?
Let me just say that, um, the recipients and everyone that, that participated, you, you make us proud. When you improve your properties, your, your houses, your businesses, and, you know, you take pride in it, it shows and it makes Aurora look good. So, thank you for everything you do to take Aurora to the next level and, and make Aurora the city that we all know that it should be. Thanks again.
Now we're gonna get on to the regular business of, of the city. The, uh, part where Mr. Mohammed does the, the, uh, the awards and presentations, the fun part. So now we're gonna get to the, the boring part. Before we get to that, well, I won't say boring, but not as fun. But before we get to that, I wanna go ahead and release, uh, the folks that are looking to go next door, uh, at the Pierce Center, the Arts Center, and, uh, and, and have some cake and, uh, and punch over there. So before we get to the, to the regular business, I'll give you a few minutes to file out. I, I, you won't hurt my feelings. Well, it, well, it does, but I won't say it. I'll see you over there a little later.
All right, let's, uh, get on with the rest of the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the Council. Under our rules, any person may address the City Council for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted by the Timekeeper or the Chair for the purpose of maintaining order. May interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the City Council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following adjournment of this meeting. The first speaker we have tonight is Mary Getch.
Mayor, you have three minutes?
Yes. Hi, I was here April 23rd talking about red light photo enforcement. I'm trying to convince you to consider getting rid of it. Yeah, I'm here again tonight for something more constructive. I'm going to suggest that you simply change the speed limit to 35 miles an hour all along East New York Street. Currently, um, sometime after you go through photo enforcement at EOLA, it raises up to 45 miles and believe me, you will be going the full 45 miles an hour. I thought everything was going to be okay. In fact, I just paid the ticket. During the month of April when it was processing, I had cycled out there to time the lights and it was at four and a half seconds, which meets statutory requirement. And that means if that's fair to the driver, then you've got enough time to stop. The engineers have this all figured out. It's one second for every 10 miles an hour. So, driving home from May, Mayville, May 4th, I got into the left turn lane. That is my survival mechanism. Some people survive by slowing up and stopping suddenly and I believe there was a citizen here speaking about that. You know, you get more accidents with rear end collisions. Other people can step on the accelerator and try to go through very quickly. Um, but I just get in the left turn lane, I do not go through that intersection anymore. So I went out May 15th and May 17th, cycled out and timed it. I have a second hand and also as a musician, I know the metronome setting of 60. And it, they timed out at between three and three and a half seconds, which is not up to statutory requirement, not fair to drivers. I, I emailed, um, the city traffic engineer. He did respond and he said, ever since 2017, they have been, that light has been programmed at 4.0 seconds. I don't know the mechanism of it and why there should be so much computer variance. It might be adjusted in the system by the traffic volume? Maybe somebody's monkeying with the lights? I don't know. But we could fix this problem by just having a speed limit of 35 miles an hour and the light currently set is, would be perfect. It would make it easier for the engineer because both EOLA and Commons could be the same light setting, which they may be, and that might be the problem. And by the way, for you new Aldermen, I did have the legal research that I had done showing how the statute, which is on our city website, translates into these seconds. The clerk has my phone number. All you'd have to do is call my answering machine, spell out your email. It is two PDF files, it is eight pages total. So for reasons of safety, oh, I forgot to mention the most important thing. What I saw, May 15th, was a driver eastbound going through. He floored the accelerator and he went through like a rocket. And that's what really motivated me to speak once more and just come up with a, a better solution. Thanks for your attention.
Madam Clerk, do we have any additional speakers?
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, we'll move on to the next section of our agenda. Mayor Appointments. Clerk, can you read the first item under Mayor Appointments?
Item 19 dash 0432, a resolution appointing Bezeda Punitzur and Mirna Lopez Rivera to the Aurora Hispanic Heritage Authority.
Second.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being no further questions or discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Smith? Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
11 A0As.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Is, um, Bezeda or Mirna here in the audience? Nope. Clerk, can you read the second item under Mayor Appointments?
Item 19 dash 0433, a resolution appointing Jose Cervantes to the Aurora Veterans Advisory Council.
Second.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? There being no questions or discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
11 A0As.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. I do see Jose here in the standup, sir, so we can just say thank you for your service. Clerk, can you read the next item under Mayor Appointments?
Item 19 dash 0439, a resolution appointing Tim Hoppa to the Aurora Civic Center Authority.
Second.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? There being no questions. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
11 A0As.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Is Mr. Hoppa present? Uh, you wanna stand up so we can recognize you, sir? Thank you very much for giving your certificate. Everyone that has been newly appointed, if you join me down front, we wanna give you a certificate and take a picture with, if you don't mind. Let's go on to consent agenda. Will clerk now please read the consent agenda in full?
Item nineteen dash zero two seven seven, an ordinance vacating a portion of dedicated public right-of-way from Nantucket Road Huntington Drive and Compton Place for the property located at twelve forty Nantucket Road in King County, Aurora, Illinois six zero five oh six, Arbor West LLC nineteen dash zero two seven seven, AU zero nine slash three dash eighteen point one five three dash FSD slash R slash B slash dash SB dash four six. Item nineteen dash zero three one eight, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to purchase three new hydraulic backhoe hammers from Alta Four Cat off the Sourcewell formerly NJPA purchasing agreement. Item nineteen dash zero three two seven, resolution amending the Aurora Municipal Airport Advisory Board bylaws. Item nineteen dash zero three three two, a resolution authorizing the purchase three Toshiba multi-function color copier and two Toshiba multi-function black and white copiers in quarterly maintenance from the inter-local purchasing systems TIPS cooperative contract through Copycat Imaging Aurora, Illinois for the Aurora Police Department Police Headquarters. Item nineteen dash zero three three seven, ordinance annexing the property located at eleven oh nine South State Street to the City of Aurora, Illinois six zero five oh six. Item nineteen dash zero three four six, a resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of a backup emergency generator and transfer switch completion, all related required work at Fire Station Five from Frank Marshall Electric of Aurora, Illinois and project management services from Hoover Incorporated amounts of one hundred seventy-seven seven, one hundred seventy-seven thousand seven hundred dollars and zero cents and twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars and zero cents respectively. Item nineteen dash zero three five nine, a resolution awarding a contract for the Grand Army of the Republic Museum lower-level remodel project to Swedberg and Associates Incorporated of Sycamore, Illinois in the amount of twenty-two, two-hundred-twenty-one thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. Item nineteen dash zero three six four, a resolution approving intergovernmental agreements between the City of Aurora and other local agencies to use the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms ATF equipment for the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network NIBIN. Item nineteen dash zero three six six, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Aurora and the Village of Silver Grove. Item nineteen dash zero three seventy one, a resolution requesting approval to accept the proposal from LSA planning to create the two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-four consolidated plan and to update the neighborhood visualization strategy area plan in the amount of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Item nineteen dash zero three seven four, a resolution to enter into a farm lease agreement with Golusha Farm LLC, twenty-seven West twenty-two seventeen Golusha Road, Warrenville, Illinois six zero five five five, for nineteen point five tilde acres of farm land located near the southeast intersection of Liberty Street and Sarper Lane. Item nineteen dash zero three seven five, a resolution authorizing lines of credit LLC with old Second Bank and Third Bank for a not-to-exceed amount of ten point zero million at each institution. This resolution will authorize the use of six point eight million dollars of the approved LLCs for currently approved redevelopment agreement funding and authorize the use of two million dollars in land sale proceeds from the Gulf Fund. Item nineteen dash zero three seven nine, a resolution for the purchase of hostage crisis communication system from A three-six technology to be used by the Aurora Police Department Special Response Team Crisis Hostage Negotiators. Item nineteen dash zero three eight four, a resolution to reject all bids for asbestos abatement at the Sonic Temple, Fox Valley Inn in Montel Six. Item nineteen dash zero three eight five, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter into an agreement with Youngburns Incorporated, seven thirty-six New Haven Avenue, Aurora, Illinois six zero five oh six, in the amount of one hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars for a new HVAC infrastructure required as part of the renovation of the second-floor bridge within the Development Services Center located at seventy-seven South Broadway. Item nineteen dash zero three eight six, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter into an agreement with Valley Electrical Contractor, forty-four eighty-five Illinois seventy-one, Osprigo, Illinois six zero five four three in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand three hundred dollars for new electrical infrastructure required as part of the renovation of a second-floor bridge within the Development Services Center located at seventy-seven South Broadway. Item nineteen dash zero three eight seven, a resolution to reject all bids for DFC second-floor bridge plumbing. Item nineteen dash zero three eight nine, a resolution for the reciprocal sharing of information and documents between the Aurora Housing Authority and Aurora Police Department. Item nineteen dash zero three nine one, a resolution authorizing the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Aurora and the Regional Transportation Authority regarding inter-agency transit signs located at the Aurora Transportation Center, two thirty-three North Broadway, Aurora, Illinois six zero five oh five. Item nineteen dash zero three nine seven, a resolution requesting approval of an agreement between the City of Aurora and Altaro Restaurants in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to facilitate the opening of a Latin Fusion restaurant in the now vacant space at the Leblon Building on the corner of Blue and Estelle. This funding will be split between a sixty-four thousand dollar grant and thirty-six thousand dollar loan payable within two years. Item nineteen dash zero four one three, an ordinance amending section two dash eighty of the Aurora of the City, the code of the City of Aurora to adopt rules authorizing the members of the city council to attend meetings by other means as narrowly permitted by section seven of the Open Meetings Act.
There's been a motion to accept the consent agenda by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any motions to remove any items from the consent agenda? Are there any questions about any of the items on the consent agenda? There being no questions, motions to remove, clerk can please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mazziakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A zero NAs.
Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Clerk, can we go on to unfinished business? Read the first item.
Item nineteen dash zero three seven eight, a resolution establishing a maximum number of Class E Aurora liquor licenses on a basis related to application from Three Fifty-Five Group Limited doing business as Black Door Pub located two fifty-five East Indian Hill Road, Aurora, Illinois.
Thank you, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have a professional conflicts. I'll need to recuse myself from any discussion and voting. I'll have to leave the room, too.
Turn the mic around, real quick.
Go ahead.
My excuse me again for the bar, Black Door Pub. I'm here with George Pacheco, the owner of the bar. Again, Maria Taguero is the general manager, and Sean Zenzoni, the head of security. We're back here to address concerns from the previous last meeting.
Counsel.
We're here today to, with a resolution, to establish the maximum number of Class E City of Aurora liquor licenses in regards to the application for Two Fifty-Five to LTD. As everyone recalls at Committee of the Hall, it was a new application due to change of ownership and has an establishment that has been in business.
Can you just explain what exactly they're applying for, and if granted, what they'll get?
They're applying for the Class E liquor license. If the city council grants another license, at that point, they will be on a one-year probationary period and will be able to run their business and drive alcohol.
In addition to that one-year probationary period, is there, are there any other requirements that they have agreed to or required by the city to ensure a safe-run business?
Yes, after our meeting at Committee of the Hall, I had a chance to speak to council and work through a plan. What they have agreed to is BACIT training twice a year and provide proof to the city. Monthly meetings with the community-oriented police officers starting in June. Video system at the establishment that would retain videos for two weeks. Thursday evenings through Sunday mornings, they would have security do parking lot inspections. And that, those inspections would start at nine PM every half an hour until a half an hour after post, no less than twice an hour, and that would include that lot, including the alcoves. Additionally, to keep communication open between the establishment and the police department there to supply the ban list of the individuals that have been banned at the establishment to the community-oriented police officers. And the other item that was agreed to is that we, at the city, would like to know who the identified manager is for each day that is working, and that manager cannot consume alcohol while in that position and working. And finally, any violations of this agreement or of our local ordinances, state law or federal law, will be sent to hearing as prescribed in the ordinance during this probationary time.
And will face revocation?
Yes.
Not suspension, but revocation?
That is an option.
Questions, Mr. Mayor, Alderman, O'Connor?
Could I clarify the items that you talked about? Is a violation of any one of all of those considered reason to send it back for hearing in regard to a revocation?
Yes, as per part of the management plan that we have come to, that would be.
Okay. And the other question is, who is to monitor, or how do we know that these conditions are being met? How is that to be handled?
Currently, I've been speaking with council. We have very good communication as well as the community-oriented police officers have been tasked with monitoring any police reports in the area, and they also have very good communication with the law department.
I can also expand on the plan proposed by the legal department, which we've accepted in full. We've gone above and beyond that. We've actually identified additional things we're gonna do in addition to that, including, well, one of the conditions was BACIT training for the servers. That ordinarily is done online on their own time. You can take the class, click through, and print out the certificate. What the bar has done is they've already had an in-house training with an outside service who came in, so Maria and George could monitor the staff's involvement, make sure they're paying attention, make sure they're learning. The bartenders were there, and the entire security staff was there. So, we're gonna do that twice a year. There's gonna be new signs placed at the entrance, of course, discouraging aggressive behavior or fighting in any manner, all that type of stuff. And lastly, the security staff has been retrained recently on de-escalating situations because there's times when people are unfortunately asked to leave the bar. In the past, that has escalated to an aggressive situation where the bouncers come and grab somebody. What they've been trained in now is kind of tactfully approaching somebody and saying, can we speak to you outside, please? We need to have a talk. Once they're outside, they're not allowed back in. So, there's multiple things that we're doing in addition to the plan that we've fully accepted here.
Alderman Franco?
Is the plan a one-year plan that coincides with probationary period?
Yes, it is.
And, Mr. Mayor, Alderman O'Connor?
Real quickly, clarification. Are those separate and apart from what Corporation Counsel Lang talked about?
Yeah, they are. There's the BACIT training, which we're gonna do, but not only are we gonna do it, we're gonna have it done on-site so we can monitor and make sure everybody's paying attention, understanding fully. And those BACIT trainings are gonna be designed to train the staff on identifying people who have been overserved or, not overserved at the bar, but who appear to be intoxicated when they arrive. Because that's an issue that has been, that we've noticed in the past, is that people arrive late to the bar, like I mentioned last week, at midnight or at one o'clock. They're already intoxicated, so they may only be served a drink or maybe two, but they're inebriated. So, now there's been training to identify that and to put an end to that.
And I appreciate the willingness to do those items, but they would not necessarily be included in a standard. If something wasn't done on that list, that doesn't mean that, you know, you're automatically going for...
We have BACIT training on that list twice a year.
Okay.
And we have asked for them to focus on the over-serving portion from our review of police reports. A lot of it stems from over-service, whether that is somewhere in the parking lot or somewhere else. It's, it's...
But any other item that was just mentioned, is that covered in the items that you talked about, the standards?
Well, the only other item would be the training that the staff has already started on doing, so that's already been accomplished. And there was the sign we're gonna put up. There already is a sign at the entrance advising all customers that everything's under video surveillance. The videos will be shared with the city and the police firm at the bar's discretion, setting forth the dress code and certain other restrictions. But we're gonna place an additional sign just to make it clear, so there's no issues.
Mr. Mayor, again?
Oh, O'Connor.
My side comment is, I would have wished that that list would have been available for us to see, rather than, you know, we can have you repeat it again and check it off, but it would have been helpful to have that available. And how is that incorporated in the granting of the licenses? Is that, how is that memorialized, or in what fashion does that come through?
We have it in an email. I can formalize it in a memorandum.
Sign?
Yes, we can do that.
Absolutely.
And, let me, I'm crediting for wrong, Alderman O'Connor, the additional step that you're taking to ensure safety in the bar. Could that just be simply, since you've already agreed to do it, could it be simply included in the requirements? Instead of just saying simply BACIT, which we know can be done just online, why not just include what you say you're gonna do?
Once a year, in person and once a year online, because I think we're agreeing to do it twice a year.
Correct.
And I don't think it's, well...
Homemling staff who have a lot of students and people that don't have any jobs?
Yeah, it was kind of a, it was kind of a process to get them all in one spot this time. So...
Well, these are your requirements based on the fact that you're applying for a license, so I assume...
Yeah, I mean, we've already done it. We've already done it.
Right. So, what I'm saying is, if you've already done it, just put it as part of the requirement.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Alderman, Alderman...
I think you need to be careful, though, because I grew up in the business. So, if you get a new bartender, you don't wanna have to say we have to have a whole in-person training, right?
Right, they need to do it immediately.
Right. So, I mean, I think if you're agreeing, I think what the mayor's saying is, what you're offering now, do you want that part of the agreement? I don't think you do. I think you wanna just have once a year in hot, on-premise BACIT training, and then everyone else legally has to be BACIT trained before they can work.
That's what I suggest, is that once a year, we'd be willing to do it on-site.
Right. I don't know that Alderman LaFche can act as your lawyer in giving you advice here, but what we're trying to do is make sure that we got everything in order, so you can have your license. So, if you're agreeing to do it, and you're already doing it, just make it part of the, make it part of the...
That's fine, that's fine.
All right. Any other questions on Alderman Hartburns?
Are they gonna submit the names of those that have gone through? Did you have that too?
Yes, we are gonna do that. We don't have the certificates of completion yet from this recent one that we did on May sixth. That we're gonna get those certificates in early June. We're gonna get them right to the legal department, and thereafter, we already have an agreement in place to get all the certificates in as soon as we have a new hire or whatever the case may be. Everything goes to the legal department.
So, every six months, you're gonna update the legal department?
Correct.
Alderman Franco?
The number of security people, you have a head of security, then what is your typical number on weekdays and weekends or versus weekends?
Alderman, we've got nine on Friday and Saturday. We've got two working the door, male and female, and then we have seven inside, including another female, to make sure the female restroom is okay. And then during the weekdays, we have one or two depending on the crowd. We have one on call.
Nine on the weekends and one or two on the weekdays.
Yes.
Alderman?
Where have the security done their training at?
Man, excuse me, I was a military police for four years, and then I've been in security for seven years, so I've been doing on-site training with everyone, and then making sure they also have their state license per card as well. And I, I don't, won't just let anyone else work. I want them to make sure they've either had security experience, military...
There's other military veterans.
Yeah, we've got about four or five other veterans.
Four or five veterans?
Yes, yes, sir.
Any additional question?
So, we acknowledge the liquor license is a privilege and not a right, and that's what we've been stressing to the staff repeatedly, but much more so over the most recent month or two, because we knew this process was coming with the change in ownership. We knew we'd be back here, and everybody is on their best behavior. Obviously, everybody realizes what's at stake here on our end, so we're asking that the liquor license be approved.
Mr. Mayor? Alderman? Yeah, a question to our officers. With the number of security we're gonna have during the week, and of course, we understand that there are more people attending the bar on the weekend, but from your experience, and you know when the calls are, weekend versus weekdays, is one or two security people during the week, do you feel that that is sufficient, or what is your recommendation on that?
Or what is your recommendation on that?
I, I would think...
Do us a favor, brother, can step up to the maximum you know you can be?
Pretty good, everyone. I'm a man across from the police department. Alderman, that's a real tough question to, 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 to handle because in our profession, we know that it doesn't take a lot of people to cause a big disturbance. You know, you get one or two, one or two big people that have had too much to drink and having one or two people there to try and control that, depending upon the size and the training of that person, you know, i- it, it may be enough, but it also may not. So it's kinda hard for us to, to say whether that's going to be enough or not. It really depends on the situation, depends on the cooperation of the person who was, who they're dealing with. And it also depends on the, the security guard, their experience and how well they can de-escalate, like he said. It's just tough for us to say, you know, yeah, it's gonna take two or three people just because every situation is different.
May I add to Alderman Book's question, since that the COP officers or any officers are given leave to go in at any time to check the bar, you've worked out a relationship to where, you know, you welcome the police in, is that correct?
Absolutely. We've, we've requested, one of the issues we found is the COP officer don't work until ten o'clock. And we've requested that they come in actually later than that because that is the busy time of night, especially on the weekend. We'd like them to see the security staff at work at twelve, twelve-thirty when it's really busy. So that's something that, that we're gonna be addressing in the meetings that we're gonna have with COP moving forward.
And although the COP officers are, they, they normally work two to ten, we have other officers working the midnight shift who can come in and we also have members of the drug and gang unit that can, can make a pass through here as well. So we can facilitate that, thank you.
Is that okay, Alderman? Any, any additional questions?
So anyway, with the one-year license, if they have the first balance and the first event in there, so they mean it's legal?
It just depends on the circumstances on...
What, what are the circumstances?
Like if it's something in our ordinance, if they violate that, then that would spark a hearing and go in front of the liquor commissioner.
However, I, I think what Alderman Garza is, is asking is, let's say someone comes in there and there is a, an incident, but they do their job and they call the police and they do everything they're supposed to do. That does not spark a violation, is that correct?
Correct. And that's what we have been reviewing since our meeting in August. They have been reporting incidents and reporting to the clerk and we review those police reports.
And can, what the Alderman may not know, and I think you must bring up, is that in the last year, we've been working on a clear and set due process for all liquor license holders for any types of violations. Can you explain a little bit about that?
Correct. What happens is we send out the notice and provide a date for a hearing and that gives the opportunity for the license holder to come in and state their case. We have officers come in to testify. So far, we've had police guilty, so we haven't had an actual hearing. But in the past year, we have been, we've had better communication with the police department. As community-based prosecutor, I'm also able to check on the local establishments. So we have been enforcing our local ordinances as well as in January, our clerk assisted in updating our ordinance where the ordinance is for both sides, both the city and the establishment have set rules that everyone can operate under that, that helps. And it's a, we also have progressive discipline in that.
Yes, I think it's not a good idea, yes, make the, the, like you say, if they violate, violation. But we wanna make sure to enforce whatever resolution we're making here. So we have to enforce, the other way is wasting time.
We are looking citywide and making sure we're enforcing our local ordinance.
Now that we have established a clear and set due process, it's easier to monitor and, and, and I guess punish along the way and enforce.
And that's another reason why, of course, we're asking for the approval this evening to give us a chance to implement the plan that we've agreed to. And if, because quite frankly, we're standing here tonight not necessarily facing the allegation of having done anything wrong. There was a high number of police calls that were referenced last week. But, you know, we, we don't know, we weren't accused of, of doing anything wrong in any of those. What we'd like a chance to do is to move forward productively, implement the plan. And if there is something that happens in the future, it'll be brought up due through the normal course.
Any additional questions?
Yeah.
Alderman Hartburns.
When you mentioned you had a number of police calls, my question I'd have is just in case, and Commander, just in case there have been several more police calls, let's say in a month you got seven, plus with that.
Each report, we, we review to see if it fits into any of those ordinance violations. And if it does, then we would proceed to hearing. We would notify the establishment and notify the liquor commissioner. It, it really depends on what the incident is.
And who's gonna determine how bad the incident was, related based on the police report?
Yes, yeah, the police report, that's how we receive the information. If there is some other source, we would have to look into it, but the police department does the investigating.
So if security call for the police to come and assist, how's that looked at? Because they're, they're trying to get assistance.
Again, we'd have to look at the total scenario typically though, when security is doing their job and either stopping a fight or, you know, doing what they're supposed to be doing or, you know, stopping a gang member from coming in and, and that causes a fight outside. That is, I don't look at that as a, that's the establishment's fault. They're doing the rules that were set out, that have been given to local establishments by, you know, the community oriented police officers to kinda stop where they're having fights due to rival gangs and whatnot. So again, it still depends on the circumstances and what is reported in the police report. I did training back in the late fall to the midnight officers and on the old ordinance. And I plan on going back to update on the current liquor ordinance to, so they understand what they need to be looking for and making sure that the clerk and the law department receive police reports when there are incidents.
Because my concern is if the officers may not have read it according to the call. So security calls that there was a fight, office wrote down there was a fight and gang member, whatever. They tried to suppress it and then they're suppressing it, they call for assistance, so...
If they're trying to keep a problem out and there's something outside the door, that would not, in, in my opinion, I don't believe that would be in it.
And I can also speak to that briefly. And last week at the committee meeting, there was the number thrown out of two hundred and some odd calls and that seemed very high, especially when they went down the list and looked at all these smaller establishments in town. We wanted to find out what those were. Maria met with, I believe, the COP officers. And for instance, we found out that just the Friday prior to last week's meeting, there were two calls placed by the bar to the non-emergency number. A girl who had fallen down while dancing and they called the ambulance to help her out as they should have. That was counted against us as a call. There was also a, a customer disputing his bill at closing time and he wouldn't pay his tab. The manager called the non-emergency line, the police officer walked in. As soon as the police officer walked in, oh, he, he paid his tab. So those, you know, are some of the things that they face on a night-to-night basis. And so just by looking at two hundred some odd calls, once you get into it, a lot of them are trivial. And from what I've heard so far, certainly not the fault of the bar doing anything wrong.
We deny about, we deny about twenty to thirty individuals a night just improper attire. We think they're gang affiliates, you know, it's a metropolitan, we're a city. There's a lot of people from different walks of life. So we do try to vet customers before they come in. So we turn away about twenty to thirty people a night to try to come in. You know, a lot of them, they might have tattoos that are suspicious. So they linger, you know, they don't wanna leave. Our security team is advised, you know, because they're, now they've become a security group, they're becoming a distraction too.
They're just hanging out in the parking lot.
They just hang out. So we ask them to leave, we have to call AVD to assist us to remove them from the premise. That's about, I'll say forty, fifty calls a year.
Yeah.
And more maybe.
So again, that's something that we, we've been encouraged to do is to take a harder stance on who gets in and who doesn't get in. But that in and of itself can lead to issues.
And I think what the monthly meetings with the community oriented police officers will assist is they have tactics. We still need to get the numbers of calls down. And those monthly meetings will continue to work with Black Door Pub on ways to, to reduce the calls of service and other effective ways to keep the numbers down when they're, if they're not needed. Obviously, if you need to call, call.
Mayor.
Yeah, Alderman.
He just indicated, so if in fact you have, if in fact you have rowdy, whomever may have pulled up, they may be intoxicated or what have you, and they ask them to leave and they're still out there. So they're calling the police for assistance. I mean, it shouldn't really be used against them. They, they doing the due process and then they're trying to help. But also, and part two, is that we had mentioned the parking lot that's on the sign by the Ashley? And can they make them move from there? That parking lot is not where Black Pub is, but that's where they may be hanging. So what do we do there?
Just to try and clarify this a little bit, we don't wanna discourage anyone, whether it be Black Door or any other business that's having a problem at their establishment, not to call the police. If they need us, then we want them to call us. I think our due diligence has to come with if there's a, a clear violation of the city ordinance on behalf of the business that is documented, that's where the issue's going to come into play. So it's not so much just the volume of calls, but if we're getting a volume of calls to any particular business and we take a look at it and we, we say something has to, there's something wrong here because we, we have other bars in town where the call volume is not that high. So we have, that's where it comes to, we have to work with the businesses to say, hey, what's happening here? Why are we getting so many calls at your establishment when this isn't happening at anyone else's establishment? And we look a little bit further into it. If there are violations, then that's what has to be dealt with on the back end. But we don't want them to feel like they can't call us. If there is a fight that they can't control out in front, we, we should be called because we're gonna have to be the ones to stop it. We don't want them to get hurt, we don't want anybody else to get hurt. So it's not just the volume of calls, it's, it's if there's something else going on in the background. And that's gonna be up to us to work with the law department and to work with them to see if there is something that can be done or if there are other violations. I hope that kinda clears it up.
But he also mentioned that it was used against him, the lady that failed.
Well, I think, I think what he means is that, I don't know, I don't know about used against him, but that's, that's counted as a call for service.
Yeah, yeah, it was tallied.
And that's why I say it's not just the amount of calls. We don't just look at the amount of calls, we look at what type of calls, we read the notes, we, we read the documentation and we look to see if there's a, an ordinance violation. So it's not just the amount of calls. Again, it's kind of a totality of circumstance. But like I said before, if you're getting two, three times more calls at this establishment, it begs the question of what, what's going on at this establishment? We have to take a closer look.
Well, I have to say, last Tuesday, when the number was given, all of us was like, what? I've never seen a whole council talk. Everybody don't speak on one, on one item. And last week, everybody spoke because the number is what got us. So if he's saying that lady failed and then a call come through and it's documented, something is wrong. We got to wait it out. We got to make sure if there's someone sick, if someone fall, what hap, whatever it may be, that should be a separate number. So if you can't say two hundred, it should be one ninety, whatever. Dude, that's all I'm saying.
Right, and I understand your point, Alderman, but you know, that was one particular call they referenced.
No, you mentioned another one too.
But there were, but there were two hundred other calls.
I understand.
So it's, I, I get what you're, I get your point and, and yeah, that number sounds like a lot.
It is a lot.
All of those aren't criminal violations, but that's why we say we have to look a little bit further.
Yeah, because we didn't know that as Alderman. We heard the number, we responded based on the number. So some kinda way, we got to separate the good from the bad or the evil from whatever. We need to do that so that we don't be alarmed the way we were last week. Because it was something to hear everybody say something, you know? So some kinda way, we got to do diligent for all the businesses, if that's the case.
And in response, Alderman, I can assure you that we do not fly under the radar by any means. The, the legal department and the police department are very much aware of the substance of all of those calls. And despite having the two hundred some odd calls, we stand here tonight with a valid liquor license. We've complied up to this point with every requirement set forth by the legal department and the liquor commissioner. And we're just asking to continue and work harder to, to do better.
But it didn't appear there.
Alderman, I'm sorry.
It didn't appear last week that that was the case. So all I'm trying to say, to make sure that you have your valid liquor license, that something be done so that we can separate the emergency from the non-emergency, that's all I'm saying.
And I, and I think now with the new due process that we're gonna have put, put in place, it'll be much easier to distinguish between a non-violable offense and a violable offense or a call for the ambulance and a call because someone, you know, there's a crime that's committed on your property. Alderman Franco.
I was just gonna piggyback what Alderman Hartburns said. If they have a couple instances that are non-emergency and it's relative to other establishments, my guess is they have non-emergency things too. So the relativity is still there. If they're four times more than somebody else and they have some that are minuscule, so these other places. So that four times, five times is still gonna be proportional. So it's a lot more than everybody else because everybody's got the same situation. They're gonna have bigger calls and minor calls.
And I just wanna add that the statistics they have, you have to look at every single police report. It could have been somebody falling down on the dance floor, but that could have been from over-service. Without looking at each individual report or each individual instance, it is very difficult for, to, to get the stats. So I, I did, I think the officers brought the information that they had and without looking at each individual report, I, I wanted to... I mean, we do have a breakout today of the different type of reports, but it, it really comes down to a case-by-case circumstance.
Well, Alderman.
Oh, Alderman.
I'm sure that the mayor and you all can handle it. And I just called a question, can we vote?
All right. We can, let me just, since there's no more comments, I'll just say that, you know, as, as mayor, I'd never want an establishment, the city, that, that gives a city a, a black eye. However, having said that, we can't make a determin, determination if an establishment gives a city a black eye unless we have a due process determine if they've actually violated the law in some kinda way. We haven't had a, a set clear process to ensure equity and fairness. But now we do have one in place and, and, and we continue to work with the police. Although, although we had, we've had a number of police calls, now we're gonna identify what these calls are, how it affects that particular establishment. And if these calls, no matter how many, how many numbers there are, actually constitute a violation, which we didn't have a way to measure in the past. So I, I thought it was unfair to simply say that, you know, this establishment was a bad establishment without having a way to accurately measure more than just saying there's a whole lot of calls, which didn't necessarily result in a violation, as council pointed out. So, you know, given the fact that, given the fact that, can somebody check these mics? Make sure we're... Given the fact that they're gonna be on probation for a, a whole year and there are set a, established requirements that they have to follow. You know, I think we're gonna be, you know, Aurora will be safe to, you know, have some repercussions, some tools to use should the, should the owner continue, should the owner violate in this point in the future. And hopefully, you know, they follow all the rules that they've set for themselves and that the city's set for and we don't have any issues and after this next year, then, you know, you won't be on probation anymore. However, if for some reason you do violate, it's gonna go through the due process, the hearing officer and eventually the liquor commissioner so we can make a determination of what's gonna happen with your license in this point on. All right, so at this point, I will call the, not... Can we entertain, all right, the motion to approve. We got a motion by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Franco. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiancos?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Savel?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bud?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Ten A zero nace.
All right, motion carries, the resolution is approved.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilors, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so let's go on to new business here. Motion to spin the rules to consider items under new business section of the agenda. Motion made by Alderman, motion made by Alderman Savel, second by Alderman Hartburns. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiancos?
Yes.
Alderman Tenell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Savel?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bud?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A zero nace.
Motion carries, clerk, can you read the first item under new business?
Item nineteen dash zero three six two, public hearing only special service area.
Item nineteen dash zero three six two, public hearing only, special service area number one ninety-seven, Aurora University Secondary Subdivision three forty-seven, South Gladstone Avenue, Aurora Illinois, Kane County.
The public hearing is now open. The public hearing is now open, are there any speakers? Are there any speakers? Are there any speakers, where you asked? Uh, motion to close the public hearing, Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Seville, all in favor? Motion carries by voice, oh, public hearing is now closed. Can you read the next item?
Item nineteen dash zero three six three, public hearing only, special service area number one ninety-eight, Butterfield Phase Two, Unit Four B, lots nineteen, four oh one, four oh three, vacant lots twenty-three fifty, Frieder Lane, Aurora Illinois Kane County.
Public hearing is now open, are there any speakers? Are there any speakers? Are there any speakers? There's been a motion made to close the public hearing by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Franco, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice, oh, public hearing is now closed. Can you read the next item?
Item nineteen dash zero four zero five, a resolution granting the advice and consent of the city council to the mayor's appointment of members and designation of chairpersons and vice chairpersons of the standing committees of the city council.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Franco. Counsel. Clerk. What, did you guys pass, did you, the orders pass the, all right, pass that on? All right, clerk can read that.
Notice of appointment and designations. I, Richard C. Urban Mayor of the City of Aurora pursuant to Section two dash one two three B of the City Code, do hereby appoint the individuals of City laws, members of the standing committees of the City of Aurora, City Council of the City of Aurora, and designate the named individuals to service committee chairpersons and vice chairpersons pursuant to Section two dash one two three C of the City Code. To the Rules Administration Procedures Committee, Honorable Carl Franco as chairperson, Honorable Emmanuel Yamas as vice chairperson, Honorable Edward J. Bug, Honorable William Donnell, Honorable Patricia Smith. To the Building, Zoning and Economic Development Committee, Honorable Michael B. Seville as chairperson, Honorable Sherman Jenkins as vice chairperson, Honorable Carl Franco, Honorable Wani Garza, and Honorable Robert J. O'Connor. To the Finance Committee, Honorable Robert J. O'Connor chairperson, Honorable Edward J. Bug vice chairperson, Honorable Carl Franco, Honorable Shakita Hartburns, Honorable Emmanuel Yamas. To the Public Health, Safety and Transportation Committee, Honorable Shakita Hartburns chairperson, Honorable Patricia Smith vice chairperson, Honorable Jud Lauchey, Honorable Theodores Mesiacos, Honorable Michael B. Seville. To the Infrastructure and Technology Committee, Honorable Wani Garza chairperson, Honorable William Donnell vice chairperson, Honorable Sherman Jenkins, Honorable Jud Lauchey, Honorable Theodores Mesiacos. Further, I request the advice and consent of the city council upon the above complete set of appointments and designations as required by Section two dash one two three B and C of the City Code, as specified by Richard C. Urban Mayor.
So there's been a motion, a second, motion by Alderman Hartburns, a second by Alderman Garza. Question or discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman Jud Lauchey.
Um, on the Public Health, Safety, Transportation Committee, you have Alderman Smith as the vice chairperson. Uh, no disrespect, but if Alderman Burns cannot be there, like, say, next week, and Alderman Smith would have to run the committee, I don't think that's a smart appointment. I think someone with more seniority should be the vice chairman.
I disagree, this isn't brain surgery, brother. Um, and with Alderman Smith's background being a paralegal, and, you know, working in a number of organizations throughout her almost twenty-five years throughout the City of Aurora, I think she can handle a meeting. However, I don't foresee, I think Alderman Hartburns has always been on top of it and usually is, is present to, to run the meetings. And what I, I think is important is that, you know, and for succession and for ensuring that we have a well-rounded council, we need senior people in, in, in positions of leadership, as well as non-senior people in positions of, of leadership. So, you know, I think she, I think she did well in that position.
I totally disagree, Alderman, not that she wouldn't do well, I'm sure she would, but Alderman Burns' mother has been ill, and she's been away a fair amount, and she's had her own health challenges. So I don't think that throwing that on Alderman Smith is fair to her.
I disagree with Alderman Hartburns.
Why don't you let me finish, please, we've been through this a few times. Will you just let me finish?
Okay.
Would anyone else, does anyone else agree with me that she would be a good vice chair right now? I, I hope that someone would support me on that. I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a good idea. I don't think it's fair to her.
Alderman Smith.
Jud, Alderman Lauchey, I do appreciate and respect your opinion here on this, but as Mayor said, I have been involved in many, many years of board meetings and running board meetings and a president of many boards, so be I have to sharpen up my rockers' rules of order a little bit. So be it, I, I am totally confident and I feel fine that I would be able to be a vice chair, and I'm honored that Mayor has trusted me with that position, thank you.
Well, it sounds like no one else agrees with you, Alderman Lauchey.
You didn't give anybody else a chance.
Does anybody else agree with Alderman? Alderman O'Connor.
I can say I have some concerns, because the committee's structure is going to change again in two years. I would think that the opportunity for the new Alderman to participate in the committee will be, that would be a new experience. And I, I probably would have some same concerns. I don't have any, any concerns with the two people elected, I think they're competent, good people. I just would question whether that would be the best direction to go at this point, so.
Again, you know, I disagree. Uh, you know, some may say that, you know, it, it's unfair for, you know, someone to be on the finance committee and just in the chairman position for, you know, thirty years, but, you know. But the reality is, you know, based on who you are and what you offer, we, you know, say we're going to appoint you back to the, to the finance committee. But because we have this new structure, and you're not always going to be here and in that position, we want to make sure we have someone like, you know, Alderman Bug, you know, in the vice chair position for succession. In this case, you know, I, I don't elect the Alderman to office, they're elected by their particular community. And once they're here, we've got to work with them the best way we can. I have full faith in Alderman Patty Smith's ability to simply be the vice chair, not the chair, the vice chair of, of a meeting should Alderman Hartburns not, not be present again. I don't know that you can speak for Alderman Hartburns and talk about her mother and her self-health circumstances, she can speak for herself. Um, but I, I, I don't think there's, I don't think there's a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, Alderman.
My mother passed July fourteen, twenty eighteen, she's been gone. But I don't see a problem with Patty being assistant. I know she's a quick learner, and all of us had to learn, and we all came from somewhere to get somewhere. So I don't see where it would be difficult for her to learn the agenda and, and to learn more about what... Look, can you call the government operation more, because as of today, would you say Franco? That was our last meeting. So we're, we're all going to be learning new things as it roll around. I mean, we have five committees, and one is new, and we have five members, and previously it was three. So I think we all is in a learning curve, because we all got to learn what each one of our committees is going to be doing. So I don't think it will be hard for Patty to pick up. I don't think it's, be hard for Alderman to pick up. I don't, I don't see where that problem is. I see that if, if you're trying to pull everybody together to give everybody experience, I think this is the time to give everybody that experience.
Mr. Mayor. Alderman Franco.
I, I don't, I don't think this is a problem, having somebody as a vice chair. What I will say, though, is when you had a three-person committee, it may have been more of a factor. You have probably four veterans on every committee, it's a team anyway. So just so, because you have a leader, doesn't mean you're not going to get the best results, because somebody doesn't have a lot of experience being that leader. I think we all kind of participate equally in these, but everybody's got one vote, it counts for one, so... Especially with the five-person committee, I really don't think there's as much of a factor. Good person's a good person.
Alderman Smith.
Yes, I also would like to remind this council that I started coming to these meetings last November, last December, and have been coming weekly to all of the G O meetings and through, you know, all the way since I announced my candidacy. So I'm not new at this, I'm not new at it in any way, shape or form, sitting down at that table as the chair the first time. I will be new, but I assure you that I won't be perfect, but I will get through it, and I will do it in an orderly fashion.
That's all we can ask for. All right, where we at now? There's been a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos? The resolution at this point.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lauchey?
No.
Alderman O'Connor?
No.
Nine A's, two nades.
All right, motion carries, resolution is approved. Can you read the next item under the agenda?
Item nineteen dash zero four six zero, a resolution designating the regular meeting times and locations of the committees of the city council.
Second.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alder, Alderwoman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? Now, just before we, we go forward, can we just clarify the times and the, the meeting of the wrap committee, which will not be during the week of city council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Rules Administration and Procedures meeting will be the only standing committee of the council that will be meeting during the first and third week. That's the week that's normally reserved only for committee of the whole. The Rules Administration Committee and Procedures committee will meet at three thirty on that first and third Tuesday. So we proceed committee of the whole.
All right. Does anybody have any questions on that? Now, that was based on suggestion of the Alderman's office staff and their ability to staff all the different committee meetings. Is that correct?
That's correct. The office of the Alderman looked at the staffing, and because that committee was moved to a week which the Alderman and Gates do not have committee responsibilities, it seemed that that would be the one that would most accommodate their schedule and create the least amount of additional work for the team there, given the addition of a new committee.
All right, well, no, any further questions based on that? Alderman Franco.
I have a question, if we go, we go late on this night, would the first wrap meeting set of the committee start next Tuesday or will it follow the committee?
Next Tuesday.
It would begin next Tuesday.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Alderman.
Yeah, in, in consideration of the, the chair of the finance committee and myself as vice chair, we've just been discussing, of course, finance committee also has an additional responsibility in the budget. And of course, we're looking at the timeframe, that we would have enough time. Finance, right now, we understand that the number, Jen, it's going to go down some. However, right now, finance is normally two-plus hours. So we wanted to consider a motion to move that possibly to three o'clock. I believe that also may help our staff, because then the meeting, if it goes from three to five, then they're still on their timetable, if it goes from four to six or six plus, especially with budget.
No, I have absolutely no problem, I can defend the amendment, I believe it was, the Alderman's office has suggested that four o'clock timetable, and they considered working through the, the budget during budget season.
I don't know that it would have been first.
I'm, I'm, say, if you want to step around, I can't hear you.
It was, it's, it would have thought about when the budget meetings come, that budget meeting would start earlier.
So you say take it four o'clock normally, just change it during?
Budget.
Budget time, just a three o'clock during budget time? Is, is it, are you twenty?
We thought even with the, the regular finance meetings, if, if you had concern, we, I mean, we had concerns with just our regular finance meetings are going now, like I said, two-plus hours. Four o'clock up till right now, a meeting today was almost two and a half hours.
Could, could I, could I make a point? So based on the special ordinance committee, which was the first committee, we had five people, it appeared with five people, they go longer, because everybody's going to have something to say. So I would suggest that even now, if we could go at three o'clock, because it's just going to be a longer meeting. Five people talking instead of three.
I, I have a problem, I mean, is this staff, is staff an issue?
Yeah, because if you have a two-hour meeting with three people, you're going to have a two-plus hour meeting with five people.
That's fair.
Alderman.
I could ask a question of our corporation counsel, how cast in stone, so to speak, are these days and times? If there's a situation where arises were, as discussions ensuing, that the times are lasting longer and they need to be moved up, or even a separate day, can the committee decide that on their own?
There are a couple ways already built into the resolution. The question would be whether or not as a standing rule, at least as far as Alderman Bug has, has expressed, that whether or not it would make sense for finance to regularly convene at three o'clock.
Which it does now.
Which, which it does now. If that amendment wasn't adopted, there is the ability, and the resolution is involved in the code, to allow the chairman discretion to either cancel regular meetings, to convene a regular meeting at a time earlier and later than specified by the resolution, as long as you're able to comply with the old Meetings Act requirements for postponing meetings. Now, if it's the pleasure of the finance committee that they would regularly need at three o'clock, I would recommend that Alderman Bug proceed with that amendment, and the council deliberate upon that amendment, if that's going to be the regular order of things. However, if it's a one-off type situation where a meeting may need to start a little bit earlier, that's something that can be accommodated under the existing ordinance. And certainly, if the meeting goes longer than five o'clock, there would be nothing that compels the council or the committee to adjourn at five o'clock, or to postpone or convene, or reconvene the meeting at a later time. Reconvene meetings have different notice requirements, you can do that a little bit differently than if you were convening a newer special meeting, so there is some flexibility built into it. But I guess to come back to the initial point, if it's the intention and the feeling of the committee that a particular start time is better as a normal rule, now is the time to do that rather than later.
Now, I, I, go ahead.
I would just ask, I, I stand by my motion, but I, I just want to make sure it's okay with our sta, I don't know who our staff person is.
Shannon, if you just come around and do the microphone survey.
On finance, right now it's Ms. Windet, but I don't know if, if, if she's still going to be on it, or...
Yes, and a lot of what we had decided, or looked at, I don't want to say decided, because you will decide, was the timing of getting an agenda out, and if their staff put that agenda out, which is forty-eight hours prior to that, and what the staff is actually doing on that Tuesday at three o'clock before that. This, these meetings, that someone will actually be in a wrap committee. Not everyone, but when meetings are going on, those meetings have been put out the two days before. And so what they're doing, when those meetings end, is they're working on minutes and preparing for the next meeting, which is, it never ends, it's a rolling thing. So when we looked at it, I mean, if you want to move the finance all the time, we wanted to do some uniformity. That's what we were looking at, try to make it uniform. We took into consideration budget, that's usually the same person, but if those budget meetings started at three, which were special meetings before, that would be time. We also looked at the breakdown of what is actually going to be in each of those committees, and it looks like there's going to be a split. Even when we, they asked, how many items do you have for the budget, when we turned it in to date with the narratives, the split's going to be where it's not going to be as many items. In finance, I would say twenty of those items out of the two-hundred and fifty that we have for the whole year, using it as just a round number, are going to another committee. And I'd say about ten of those, I'm not talking about the twenty, are going to another committee. So we thought that those meetings would be shorter, and that's really how we came up with that. Try to do some uniformity, so that staff knows that that meeting, every, not just for our office, but for staff that's putting items together, this is the deadline, so it's not this meeting's on this day at this time, this meeting on this day at this time, it's already confusing trying to remember what P and D is now, and what P and D was. So that's kind of where we went with that. That's how we came to that conclusion. We didn't just throw anything out, that we looked at, how do you cover getting the items on an agenda without missing any deadlines?
I understand it, if, if Ms. Windet can fulfill that role as our staff person on finance, I, I would leave my motion to move our time to three o'clock for my case.
Mr. Alexandria, do you have something?
Just one thing to add, Mayor, as, you know, I spend a lot of valuable, quality time attending finance committee meetings. And while we believe there will be less, I think in the interest of continuity, I would agree with Alderman Bug. We set it at three, that way...
Uh we set it at three. Um that way, not only can we see how things are gonna go, but it also ensures for budget that they start at three and that can continue to roll. And then we could always make adjustments uh afterwards if we needed to push them back. But I would hate to see folks um have to go longer than necessary, um especially from the support staff side. So I I would say three o'clock uh is a good uh starting point and then we can always adjust it.
Three's fine.
All right, so that's a friendly amendment, so let's just go ahead and, is everybody all in favor for friendly amendment for three o'clock for um finance? All right, so there's other motion.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that the people are here and the finance committee.
Okay, yeah, right, 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 right. Who are the people? Is everybody good with three? All right, all the people, they're three, okay. All right, so then we've got another question about this special ordinance in this committee that's now gonna be pulled into the um wrap committee. And all the work that we still have to do updating our ordinances from nineteen sixty-eight and seventy, whatever. Um uh is that, and that's gonna be on an off week, meaning C O W week and not for the city council. Uh the chairman of that committee has just stated that based on the issues of how long it takes, that um that's probably one that he'd like to get started at three as well. So we wanna talk about that a little bit. What is wrong with these mics?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I could give a historical perspective on that.
Go ahead.
We would, um, we had a lot, a lot of different issues, issues that we'd never seen before. It was very philosophical. Um what we ended up doing was running an hour and a half and kinda cutting it an hour and a half. We could've always went longer because there's always something else to talk about, something to push the next time. So um I, three thirty could work if we, if we put a time limit on it. Um, you know, we can cut it off at uh an hour and twenty minutes or we could go with three o'clock, but what I would like to do is is make sure that the people on that committee can make an extra half hour earlier. It's certainly no problem for me, but that would work out fine. At least we'd have a little time between then and the getting the C O W here.
It it probably would be more essential to do three o'clock to give you time to get ready for committee of the whole. Um so if that, and again, um can I speak with the Ald, someone for the Alderman, Sandy, wanna step, Miss Trubert, wanna step up? Now, you, I know we're talking, we're trying to keep things as uniform as possible and that's why everything was at four o'clock, but given the fact that uh this is one that it will involve more discussion than than normal based on everything being new and changing the ordinances that will take a while to work on. Um because we have so many of them that are old. Um you have staff that'll be able to do that at three o'clock. Okay, all right, so the folks that are on the wrap committee, is everybody good with three o'clock?
Aye.
All right, there, look, Alderman, all right, so, all right, so that's one friendly amendment, all in favor? Changing that time for wrap committee from from four o'clock to three o'clock, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. All right, so that's one we changed it. I'm sorry, say. Finance, three o'clock and wrap committee at three o'clock and all the other meetings and at four unless there's gonna be some change in the future. All right, so now we have the times that were all the friendly amendments, so.
Shakita, you don't want the, your committee that you're chairing to be at four thirty?
Four o'clock is fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
So uh, so let's go on to the uh, all right, so is there, for the actual amendment or resolution itself? There was a motion, I believe, by Alderman Hartburns and second by Alderman Garza, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and.
Question is to prove the resolution as amended.
As amended, so, all right, so motion and second, there, then questions answered already, any additional questions? All right, with that, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Maziancos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lauchey?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A zero nays.
All right, motion carries, resolution is approved. All right, so I request referrals, this on the agenda are referred to the planning council and planning commission. All right, is there a motion to approve pay the bills?
Second.
Motion by Hart, Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Franco, are there any questions, discussions concerning the bills? None? Well, the police, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Maziancos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lauchey?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A zero nays.
All right, uh motion carries, bills are approved to be paid. There, there's been a motion to adjourn, Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Franco, all in favor?
Aye.